Now, like on these next door, you know, like the app where people post in it.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a duty and justice for all.
Roll call.
The Honorable Mayor Ron Shaver.
Here.
Council members David Fowler.
Here.
Doug Sashow.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
And Kevin Lindell.
Present. First on the agenda is recognition of Chandra McCoy, Amanda Dunn, and Steve Sampson for completing master's degrees. Mr. Hamer and Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Recently, Steve Sampson finished his master's degree of science and sports administration from the University of Northern Colorado. When he finished this, we really wanted to come and say thank you to you guys for your tuition reimbursement program. And that made me think of Chandra, who had finished her master's in library sciences last year. And then John said, hey, Amanda just finished one as well. So we decided to bring them all up here. So I'm going to go through this real quick. But Chandra McCoy, she used your tuition reimbursement program, and she now has a master's in library science from Emporia State University. She also has completed coursework for a master's in elementary mathematics and reading, although she did not apply for graduation from that one. And Steve Sampson, like I said, just completed his sports administration masters from the University of Northern Colorado. I'll let John introduce Amanda, and then we have some gift cards for him.
Amanda just reas-- well, on June 1st, she will graduate from CSU Global Campus with a master's degree in human resource management. This is her second master's degree. She earned her first in 2015. That was a master's in legal administration with emphasis in court administration from the Sturm College of Law at the University of Denver. So we really commend these folks for all that they've done. There are other people in the city who are undertaking, pursuing higher education and further certification related to their jobs. And Ty is another example of one. He's in the Colorado Certified Public Manager Program, has been for about a year now. That's the same program I took a few years ago through CU Denver and the School of Public Affairs, and he's doing a great job in that. So applause for everybody.
I'd like to commend you all and everything just real quickly before you get up and say something because I had enough time doing graduate work when that's all I was doing. And for you guys to do it while you're doing a full-time job and running families and everything else, I think it's really commendable.
If you want to say something, go for it.
I'm gonna act on these tenors.
Just saying reimbursement.
I'd reiterate what Kevin had to say. It's very commendable. Amanda, two of them. That's very impressive. I think maybe that speaks to masochistic tendencies. It's highly motivated, I would say. But there's a lot of people that are gonna go back and continue their bachelor's to get their master's and never make it. And I commend all three of you on going back and attaining your master's degree. It's a very commendable achievement, and you deserve all the accolades and the gift cards that you've received. So thank you for what you guys do. Next is a presentation on a request for in-kind services and fee waivers for the Morgan County Fair. Mr. Masters, I'm Steve.
Thank you. And just to echo, thank you for the tuition reimbursement opportunity. That helps significantly, especially with raising families and trying to make every penny count. So we appreciate those benefits. Thank you. So this right here is a fee waiver, as we like to call them now, for a special event. Anytime a nonprofit organization requests a fee waiver of over $1,000, it must be presented to city council. This here is for the Morgan County Fair. Those who were here with us last year remember me presenting this back at the golf course. They're requesting the same services as last year, which is basically the use of picnic tables and the showmobile over the county fair weekend. It totals to about $5,500, which includes 30 picnic tables over 15 days. They like to have it several days beforehand, the county fair, as well as a couple of days afterwards, and then the showmobile for county fair weekend. And then last year, we also waived deposits because we've been doing this for quite some time. They've been very respectful of our equipment. So seeing the need of charging someone for a deposit, knowing we're going to refund it back to them a couple of weeks later, it doesn't make any sense. So it's staff's recommendation that we offer this fee waiver for them. So any questions you may have, I will try my best to answer them.
Kind of something we do every year, so it doesn't appear to have changed an awful lot from last year. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
It's good to be partners with, you know, with the county in these endeavors. It goes both ways, so.
Yeah. Good economic benefits as well for the county.
There's no questions or comments, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'll for resolution to approve the in-kind services and fee waivers for the Morgan County Fair.
Second. Have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
The resolution carries unanimously?
Okay. Next is presentation on a request for in-kind services and fee waivers for Bob Stock.
All right. So continuing on, so another big event. Bob Stock is coming ahead of us, and they likewise are asking for fee waivers for services. So just a quick run-through of what they would like to request as well. They utilize City Park, as you know. That's going to be going on in July, July 12th and 13th. So there will be fee waivers for picnic shelter at City Park, the park deposit, 30 tables, 30 additional tables into the 20 that we will have there already for our concert series that we will be doing on Thursday nights, the band shell for that weekend, and the showmobile. So any questions associated with that?
Well, I know we can trust the people from the fair, but can we trust these people?
Can we trust these people? I've said it multiple times. I remember one of the first things I learned when I got here was, don't mess up Bob Stock. So that is why I'm here. And I've done a good job so far, as well as the car show and Christmas capital. But we'll get to those later.
The county fair is the counties. This is for Morgans. It brings in a lot of people from well outside the city. It is one of the biggest events that is part of our community. So I guess we could probably help them out as much as we can for as much as they do with this. I know it's a lot of work, and Lindsey chases bands all year long getting ready for it. Does anybody have any other comments? If there is none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution waiving the fees for the Bob Stock.
Second. Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously. And did we want to let?
It's becoming a very simple and easy process for you now.
In fact, yeah. In fact, now that that's taken care of, I'm gonna turn the table over to Wayne and Lindsey. And they wanted to first give their thanks and just mention a couple of other things, so.
Here, take this. I don't want your master's degree.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for all you guys do for the community. And yeah, we're sucking up a little bit because we've got some issues. Bob Stock has grown and grown significantly. We've studied this, done some things, and we think we have some solutions. It got a little intense last year with crowd control and things like that. So Police Department did a great job, and they feel like that's not a big issue. But where we're at and what we're coming from, we felt like there was a very-- one glaring issue, it's bothered me from the beginning downtown, but since the band shell's been put in. And that is the beer garden being behind in the Elks parking lot, all that traffic going in there. And we're trying to get bands in, and the bigger the bands, the more headaches we have. And so we have an ask for you tonight, and we would like you guys to consider allowing us, I don't know what this will take, but moving the beer garden from the Elks Lodge and having it in Main Street. It'd be fenced in, a tent. We feel like we're-- one of the layouts, if you saw our layout on the map, is we're going to have a stage this year at Bijou in Maine, out in front of, kind of in front of Cables, just in that. Yeah, okay. That's a change that we're going to make, trying to make some room in City Park. It'll be a little bit more active stage than what we've had in the beer garden in the past. But what we'd like to do is move that congestion out from behind the stage. And having looked around and trying to find a place for it, we thought, what the heck. The best spot we've found right now is in Main Street.
Are you talking about right in the middle of?
Right dead center in the middle of Main Street. Yep.
We're talking 400 block.
Yep.
Sure, sure.
So similar to, seems like it was just a couple of years ago, but when we did Pedal the Plains. So where Pedal the Plains had their beer garden, I thought it was in, I want to say it was in Wells Fargo's.
Yeah, and we've done that once. We had it there at one time. We had it in Wells Fargo parking lot. The, which was fine. And we would be happy with that, except we did it one year. Management changed at the local branch. It went up to corporate. They shut it down like that.
Who would be the liquor license?
Well, we would prefer to still have the Elks. I don't know how that works. That's what I'm here for, is inquiring information.
How does that work, John?
The Elks couldn't do the special events permit. You got two issues, public consumption and sale without a license. So the Elks can do, being a fraternal organization, they're one of the things, one of the groups that qualifies for a special event permit. Unfortunately, the city's municipal code prohibits public consumption on any public way, thoroughfare, park. That's why it's never been in the park. And I don't know that, you know, we, in 2009, I believe, we put to a vote whether to allow beer in the park, and that was defeated. And I don't know, I would have to look back. I think that was by the council's choice that that was put to a vote rather than passed by ordinance. It may be possible for the council to pass an ordinance allowing in certain instances that you approve, not a blanket, you know, you can walk around with alcohol anywhere.
No, and we don't want that either. It would be contained just like it is now.
But in situations like this, you know, that you would, might authorize the use of, you know, a particular piece of city property for a special event liquor license. So.
And just to reiterate, it would be this exact same process, I guess, for lack of a better term, as in the Elks Lodge now. They will hire the security. We'll have it all fenced off, that kind of stuff like that. But we're just--
Same things being served.
Yeah.
I mean, we see that as just more of a logistic change for us.
All of our band traffic comes in there. Everything is right there. And it's, so far, we haven't got anybody run over, but--
Right.
It truly is a concern of ours. It has been for years.
So it would still be fenced in, same as Elks controlled entrance and egress?
Nobody under 21 allowed, no change to what they're serving, maybe the same amount of beer they carry now.
Private security, the whole.
So is this a map that's in the packet? Is this an old one that shows it in the Wells Fargo lot?
That is.
Okay.
That's a last year's map that we had turned in.
Okay.
Before we looked at making this change.
Okay.
So we could resubmit a map that's more reflective of what we're thinking.
Now, is the next, so the first lot is Wells Fargo, correct? The second lot is the city's.
Correct.
Correct. And then the next part is back to the bank, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Your mayor, council, when Wayne brought this idea to us, I just really felt he should come here and share this idea with you before pursuing any of the legalities and trying to figure out the license issues. I really felt like he should have your support if he was going to move forward with this. So they did their event application, I believe, like it would be without this change. But if they were to pursue this change, we can update their application and their maps and all that.
What's the, this is a pretty quick turnaround, correct?
That's why--
Bob Stock's still July.
First part of July.
Yeah.
Nina, what would be the requirements, or how would we go about amending this or getting something like this approved for a temporary special use permit?
Well, we'd probably have to amend the code according to what John--
Yeah, it would require changing the ordinance because, changing the code because Brush does this for their Oktoberfest. But their code says that except where authorized by the local governing body, alcohol is prohibited in public places and things. Ours doesn't have that except clause, and that's something that we would have to add, giving you the authority.
But it sounds like the timeframe wouldn't work for the notice to the ordinance. But I would, it sounds like something that's worth a lot to look into for the future. It just sounds like the time might be too tight, right, for the two ordinances and--
It's-- When is Bob Stock?
12th and 13th of July.
It's conceivable. It would be really tight, but we'd have to, if we were going to do it--
I'd insist for an ordinance for June 4th if the timing is right.
Yeah. If we would have to bring first reading at the next meeting, if the council, you know, is in favor of doing that. And then have second reading on the 18th. That gives us about 20 days. You need to post the property for 10 days. So--
We could make that--
I don't know. We'll have to put a sign in the middle of Main Street, I guess, saying--
Lindsey will wear a sandwich board and stand up.
In the middle of the street.
That's what it'll take. I'm not quite sure how we'll handle the posting, but. So are you talking in the--
In the street.
But do you know where?
400 block. Yeah, it's in the 400 block. We're thinking, we'll put up a big tent like we do for Cargill. And probably at least half of that tent would be not in view of the stage, if you know what I mean. It would be library on up. My thought is the Betty Larrick's parking lot area there, from those buildings.
North.
Somewhere, yeah, somewhere north. From the north side of that parking lot, that direction.
Not in front of-- My other concern would be that we're going to put a beer garden right in front of a restaurant that makes their revenue off of people drinking alcohol.
And he's good with that.
Oh, and they're good. That's good.
Okay.
He would love to have the whole street open then and be able to serve some beer out there, too. But I'm not sure we're ready for that yet. But he's, you know, we're bringing him a stage for his patio and things like that. So I went and talked to him yesterday, so.
Do we know who, is there, is there any, where Converged Day Treatment? I think they were--
They used to be there.
Are they still there?
They're not there anymore.
Do we know who, whose property that is? Because is that--
I don't think the size will work.
Okay.
Because I think even Wells Fargo, we looked at that again. I think even the size of that is a little small for the crowd we're now gaining. We have concerns about packing people in as opposed to having some space.
I was just thinking if, for some reason, it, you know, there's--
So--
Public outcry that, and we can't--
Yeah.
Do in the middle of the street, maybe.
We haven't found anywhere that's private that's big enough.
So we're--
That would be easier.
So we're looking at doing the exact same thing that we've been doing for 10 years, except for relocation of where the beer garden is, instead of it being behind.
And putting it--
And in your 10 years, can you recall of any major issues or any, I mean, we have police there?
We've had more issues probably with--
Lost kids was a big concern last year.
And people, people with alcohol in the park.
Right.
You know, they've had that issue, but we haven't had any problems in the beer garden ever.
We feel like it could actually minimize--
Absolutely.
--the use of people because they can't see behind the stage. We feel like them bringing bottles, bringing stuff with them would actually lessen that if there's some view of the stage from the beer garden. We feel like it'd benefit.
We don't know. We know it's a big ask. Brings some concern. But when you were talking about how wonderful the event was, we don't want you to go unchallenged.
Thank you. I appreciate that immensely.
So Wayne, have you talked to the Elks about this? I know they pulled out an application for a special event permit for several events, and I assume this being one of them, they haven't returned it yet. Is that what they're waiting on to see?
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And so it's--
They think it would help their sales as well, because daytime sales are slow behind there. But if it's a little more visible, they think--
Right.
The ask definitely opens a door.
Yeah.
To not just Bob Stock, but every other event that the Elks would normally do, a beer garden. I would think we, there's a potential for that.
I would assume that they would, for their, most other events don't have that big traffic jam behind the stage. That's the unique part of this. I think the Elks, to be honest with you, would prefer to have it in their parking lot. It's just a logistics issue on our end that--
Every band that comes through and a manager gets here, and even though we tell them ahead of time, when they get here, they're always upset with us because they're walking through a beer garden, their fans are coming into a beer garden, the security to move them. And again, I mean, it's just something we deal with. But it is a little rough. Last year, in particular, kind of raised the stakes, and Friday night, it was very stressful on us because it was a lot more than we anticipated. And so looking at that again this year, it is, it is a big concern when those managers land here, they could get a little frustrated with us.
Well, and you've had some pretty decent band members that kissed two when they were here. They went right through it, but they indulged like nobody's business. Rob did the same thing last year. So you've been fortunate on that aspect, but how long is that gonna go?
So we wanted to give you a glimpse of what we're thinking and see if there's a way we can get something changed, what needs to happen.
Well, I guess the best we can do is look at doing the amending of the ordinance, put it to a vote with the council, and see where it goes. If it gets a majority vote, then I guess we can look at doing. And if the timeframe is appropriate--
Yeah, I would hate to give you an absolute guarantee. I think it's, you know, the timeline is going to be pretty tight. And if everything goes smoothly, we may be able to do it. But I, you know, I don't want to promise it. I would ask that you communicate with the Elks pretty soon and tell them to get in a separate application for this event with, because you have to provide a map. So you're going to have to zero in on, you know, that, it's going to take a couple of weeks, four weeks from now, to get the ordinance passed on two readings. So you have time, but you're going to need to zero in on exactly where you want to locate the beer garden on Main Street and, you know, some of the logistics of that. So.
Should they do two? Should the Elks do two for this event since there's a possibility that--
Should we be doing both?
So making sure they have it set for in their parking lot.
That might not be a bad idea.
And we could do that for both, because we'll need to know for stage placement, and there are a lot of things that that would interest us. So we'll probably have to operate with two different layouts.
Yeah, contingency.
Because it wouldn't be pretty if something happened and there was no beer garden at all.
Well, and we're not, yeah, exactly. We know it's a lot. We do. But it's become a bigger event than we kind of had imagined when we originally started. I don't think that's a bad thing. I think we still have room to grow and things to do if we can keep finding decent bands at our price level. But, but some of the logistics that have been a concern are magnified when you've got that many people. So.
What would be the very soonest for then to that be posted? What are we looking at at a final date, John?
For what to be posted?
If that were to pass and be a go and be posted?
Well, we could--
As soon as date.
What I'm thinking is that we would not have to have the ordinance finalized and in effect before we post the property. You know, if we get past first reading and then second reading, and that would be on the 18th, it would have become basically law on June 25th. And, you know, we could post the property right then, but we could also post it sooner. If, you know, if we know that it's passed on the 18th, all we have to do is wait for it to be published in the newspaper again and five days to transpire. So.
Well, we will proceed in two directions.
Yeah, that makes--
And we'll ask the Elks to do the same. And if you guys can give us some consideration and look into it, we'd appreciate it a lot. Otherwise, we're going to need you to work security behind the stage.
And I'd say, and I'd say, any citizens that have concerns, definitely let your local council member know in the different wards if you have concerns about this. Both throw in.
Yeah, and we would appreciate that. And like I said, we know it's a big ask, but we don't see it changing what's already there. It's simply changing the location of what's already there. And, but, there are ordinances, so.
Is the idea or the consensus, I know you can't say right now, but to amend it and similar to Brush where it's allowed in certain circumstances, not blanketly?
Yeah.
Right, I think similar language.
I think that would be the way to do it, yeah.
When Wayne and Lindsey ask.
Lawyer does not approve. I'll, you know, that's no problem to have that drafted for the June 4th meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
And Clint, I'm glad you brought up, check with your council member, because that reminds me, there will be a public hearing on the second reading of this ordinance as well. So people will have an opportunity--
Which is a 9:00 AM meeting, right? That's a 9:00--
So thank you guys for supporting the in-kind stuff. And thanks for your consideration on this, and we'll, we'll put on a good show.
Always do.
Always do, yeah.
That is coming. That'd be pretty cool, yeah. So this would be something for the 4th?
Yeah, I think that's the council's direction. Am I right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Please and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider an application for a special use permit. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider an application for a special use permit to allow a single-family home in a multifamily zone at 304 Gateway Avenue. This is a public hearing. Please keep your comments and issues before the council. Each speaker is asked to limit comment time to three minutes unless the speakers represent a group of citizens in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it is necessary in light of the number of people who have signed up to testify. First is the issue of legal notice. Ms. Dunn, has the hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on May 1st.
Next is presentation of the application. Mr. Glamire.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Council. What you have in your packet tonight is a consideration of a special use permit for a single-family home located at 304 Gateway Avenue. Currently, this property is Zoned R3, which does not allow a single family as you use by right, but does allow for single-family homes through the special use process. You've seen these before in this subdivision. This is the last lot on Gateway that's available for a single-family home in this area. Ms. Helms with Northeast Colorado Housing has applied for that special use in order to build a, I think, a self-help home on that lot. We did take this to the Planning Commission on May 13th. There were no comments at that meeting. Planning Commission did hear this in a public hearing and recommended unanimously to the City Council this request for approval. We've received no public comments for or against this application. Staffs reviewed the criteria. You have that in your packet. We'd ask you to consider that when making your recommendation for approval or denial. We've looked at all of that, and based on this application and the criteria, we would recommend approval of this application. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
When you say self-help home, is it like a group home?
No, it's, you build your own home, or you put a lot of sweat equity in the home.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep.
All right, sort of like...
Habitat for Humanity is a similar program, yep.
I wasn't sure. Thank you.
And they've done a few of these over on the northeast section of town.
Okay.
Yep.
So the lot is actually one of the ones, I mean, we've dealt with these over there before.
Yeah, it's in that same neighborhood. That's correct.
Does anybody have any question, other questions for Steve?
Nope.
Next, we'll hear comments from the applicant. Does the applicant wish to...
Yeah, I didn't see Sharon here tonight, so.
Okay. Any public comments? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on the issue for or against? Seeing none, I would ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to your office prior to this hearing.
None were received.
None received. Council discussion, are there any questions or discussion council wishes to elaborate on?
Nope.
With that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Your Honor, I offer a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion to close by Lisa Northrup, a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Council action, Ms. Williams.
Um, yes, so the resolution here would be to approve case 19-006-SU on application for a special use permit to allow a single-family home in a multifamily zone at 304 Gateway Avenue, subject that the special use runs of the land in perpetuity.
Okay. I would entertain a resolution to approve or deny.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve special use number 19-006-SU, a special use permit for a single-family home in an R3 zoning district, as was recommended by the Planning Commission, with the following, that the special use permit runs with the land in perpetuity.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you, Steve. Next is a presentation on bids for remodeling the airport FOB facility.
All right, what you have in your packet here, Council, is a request to award what I'd call the second phase of remodel work at the airport FBO office. We initially budgeted $75,000 last year to remodel the building. We put that out to bid as a large project, and I think it was a little difficult for the contractors. We received two bids when we put the entire project out, and they were just about $200,000. So we thought maybe we'd start to piecemeal this together and see if we could get some or all of the work done for less, and we've been a little bit successful in that. We, we had a project that we did some windows and some insulation, as a couple of separate projects. Those came in pretty cheap, and so we've got some money and went out with a little bit larger phase, and that's removing some walls, putting in some new flooring, building a new office, a little closet space, and some paint and this kind of thing. And the two bids you've got before you tonight are to take care of most of that work. So we'd recommend CND Construction LLC was the low bidder on, on this work at $20,411. Both these contractors could certainly do the work, so we're, we're happy with Kurt and his bid. He actually did the, the insulation work for us up there, so we're pleased to have him back up there working for us. We do have a little bit more work to do. After this project's done, we've got some remodel work in the kitchen we'd like to do and maybe purchase some new appliances and some new desk furniture and this kind of thing. But I think we're gonna get this project all finished for under $75,000, piecemealing it.
Pretty close to what we originally had budgeted.
Yep.
So you feel pretty comfortable, because it's about $50,000 that's left after the $6,000 plus this, and you're pretty comfortable you can finish off the project with that?
I think we can, yeah. Yep, I think we're real close now. The appliances are pretty expensive. The, the work in the kitchen's gonna require some ADA appliances, and those are a little more expensive. But I do think we can get it pretty close to finished, if not all the way finished.
Any other questions for Steve? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from CND Construction LLC for the airport FBO facility upgrade in the amount not to exceed $20,411.
Second. Was that you, Clint?
That was.
Kevin. I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Next is discussion on establishing a backflow prevention testing fee and adding them to the citywide schedule of fees. Mr. Nation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Bringing forth tonight a request of counsel. We've been in several times over the years to discuss the, the rules and regulations that the Health Department has handed down to us, and this was one of the latest ones that we put into place five years ago. Basically, it's a, it's a safety issue that the Health Department feels that we need to have in place, and so we're required to go into all of our commercial businesses, or at least have them fill out a survey and indicate how all of their appliances and everything that uses water within their buildings are connected to our system. In some cases, they don't have to do anything more than just do the survey, and they're good to go. They don't have any type of cross connections, you know, situations that require a device, a protection device to be installed, but in a lot of cases, they do. Right now, with our efforts, we're gauging that there's somewhere between six and 700 commercial business places that we have to be looking into. We know right now through our initial survey, surveys that we have over 300 devices that we have within our system. The way that the, the state regulation requires it, that if you have one of these devices that's protecting our water system, you have to have that thing tested every year, and those results sent back to the city of Fort Morgan's backflow technician so he can keep them on file, and we can make sure that everybody is safe that way. Your bigger companies like Walmart, they know that these things have to be done. It's a corporate standard. They have somebody that comes out of Denver, does all their testing for them. They file them with their corporate office. We get copies sent to us. It's all taken care of. We're having a little more problem getting just the more mom-and-pop type of operations to understand that these things have to be done. They have to be returned to us. And one of the things that we've discovered through this process is that there is only one actual certified tester within the city of Fort Morgan. And we were hoping that now that we're going into year four of this program, that we would have more testers available for people to use. My staff has gone through all the requirements. We have a surveyor, two surveyors on staff, and we now have three testers on staff. We do handle the testing of the city devices and the city buildings. And, but we're to that point where we really feel that we would like to have your authorization to have our staff available to provide tests. The way the regulation works is that if we determine that you have a device that is not compliant, we give you 120 days, and then technically, the Health Department wants us to go shut your water off to make you become compliant. And if we don't have enough people that can go out and do tests and help out the businesses, we're just afraid that we're gonna start to run in once this mandatory period comes to an end where everybody has to be compliant. We're gonna start to see a lot of non-compliance, and then we're gonna have issues with turning off water, and then all of a sudden, you're gonna have a whole room full of people wanting to talk to you about backflow devices, and we're trying to prevent that from happening. So, so what we're asking for tonight is we want to be able to utilize, provide the service through our staff to people just as an option. They can still, if they're still using the local plumber to do it, they're more than welcome to do that. If they're like Walmart and they have, you know, the Denver company that does this already for them, they're more than welcome to go ahead and do that. We just want to have the option available to our, our commercial people to utilize us and hopefully keep there from being a, a true backlog within this testing. And so you'll see in your memo, the, the guys in the department went and researched and looked into this. Like I indicated in the memo, we did determine that quality water has done this very same thing. They've had their guys certified to do testing so they can test backflow devices within their system. And so, so we're looking to get approval on a resolution allowing city staff to perform backflow assembly testing and adopt the necessary fee for such testing, and then to add these fees to the, the citywide schedule of fees. And that way, if we need to adjust any prices, we can. And you'll see that we have prices set up for the actual testing, and then if there's any minor repairs that need to be made, we can charge for the repairs while we're looking at them. So be happy to answer any questions. I know this is something that came up years ago, and it went away, and then the Health Department's kind of laid it on us again, so.
So this gives us a resource to maintain our compliance.
Yes.
Which is...
And we've been, we were close to not being in compliance last year with the number of assemblies that had been checked, and that requirement jumps to 100% next year. And so we've got to get to 100%.
So are they still, is the state still looking some point down the road that even residential will have to meet back sprinkler systems and that? They've dropped that?
I, I would love to stand here and tell you no, Ron, but I, at this point, it just, as we see more and more regulations and water safety and everything, it's probably inevitable. It probably is.
Well, I know they had it in initially.
Yeah, and they took it out, and so that's why I think at some point in the future, everybody that has a backflow device on a sprinkler system is probably gonna fall underneath the same regulation. But at this time, that isn't the case, and so we're not gonna go down that road because that number goes from, you know, 300 devices up to probably 3,000 devices overnight, so.
Brent, I think it's a super creative solution to give good customer service, so thanks for thinking through it with your team.
So this will be something that when, when we don't have compliant devices, this will be a stopgap measure that we will put in place before we would have to go out to turn off their water.
Yes, yeah, this is how they would come into compliance. And so, yep, and right now, we're just seeing, and I helped Eric Smith, who's our technician that handles backflow, and he just did third notices, and we took out, I think there was 17 notices, and I think there was eight of them that I remember that we walked into, that the first thing they told us was, "We've already talked to our plumber. We're on the list." And here we are, running up to the deadline with them, going, "Okay, you need to get off of the list." And, and so that was when I had the discussion with the guys about going ahead and bringing this forward and doing it, so.
But it's truly not that business nor the plumbing company's fault. It's just there is...
No, there's just so many of them that need to be done, and now they've got to be done in perpetuity.
I think the next closest one is Keansburg.
Yeah.
And they charge them a pretty healthy price to come out and do their inspections out here.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's, it's economics, it's resources available to meet our compliance requirements, so.
And it doesn't look like this is, obviously with the rates that you're recommending, we're not revenue generating, we're cost-reducing.
This should cover our, you know, costs of doing the tests and everything, but it's not, yeah, it's not a revenue generating mechanism.
Right. Great job by your staff, though, to come up with this, you guys to come up with a solution and...
Well, and the prices are very well in line. My brother-in-law does this in California as a business, and so they are very well in line. Is there any other questions for Mr. Nation? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution in allowing city staff to perform backflow assembly testing and adopt the necessary fees for such testing and to add these fees to the citywide schedule of fees.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brent.
See you again in a few minutes.
Yep. Do those take effect immediately? I mean, or...
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution. It's in effect.
Done.
In effect.
Yeah.
Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion on a decision about moving forward with a television documentary on the diversity in Fort Morgan. I had been contacted by Fort Morgan Tourism Board. Emily got a request from a movie production called Information Matrix, which does documentaries. They've done them with Southwest Airlines regarding diversity in the workplace. Somehow, they contacted the county commissioners. They turned it over to Emily, and the commissioners have not really wanted to do any of this. I had sent each of you the information that I had got from them, and there is, there's a lot of benefits to it. There is some monetary, unbudgeted monetary requirements for it as well. So we had brought it forward. Sarah looked at it and thought it would be, there would be some benefits to her economic development side of things, and has everybody had an opportunity and got the email that I'd sent you and looked over the information.
Yep.
Okay, I guess I'll read a little bit of this is what they have sent us and what we will, we'll get from it, just for the public's awareness. The company's name is Information Matrix. They do a public, they produce public television spots on various... Information Matrix. They do a public, they produce public television spots on various things that I stated earlier. They've done them with American, or Southwest Airlines, a lot of other breweries, things of that nature on various things. And they wanna do one on Fort Morgan, which is gonna be titled "Great Places to Live, Work, and Raise a Family." They will shoot it here and produce it here, and the public distribution, Information Matrix Short Form Documentary Series will be distributed to public television stations in all fifty states. The overall project will include the production of one three-to-five-minute educational segment produced as a standalone short-form documentary for distribution to public television statements nation, stations nationwide, estimated to reach one, for one year, sixty million households. Information Matrix maintains editorial control for the series format, following public TV standards, and will adhere to the guidelines for public television official practices. The host of the Information Matrix Public Television is Laurence Fishburne. He's a very well-known actor and movie star, and he is the one that will be the spokesperson and the narrative on it. Mr. Fishburne's image may not be used for other broadcasts other than for the public television series. Morgan County and City of Fort Morgan agree to the content, agree to be a content expert for Information Matrix, and understands that the format and the public television segment is non-commercial and strictly educational in nature. In adherence with the public television standard practices, there are no fees associated with the public television proportion of the project. All fees outlined in this authorization covers production costs for the value-added production and distribution of the outline, which is outlined below. The added value of, or added services is a five-to-six-minute corporate profile, which they will provide the production of one broadcast-quality five-to-six-minute information, educational documentary profile with expansive and detailed information documenting the issues and educational message that is applicable to your, our target audience. This is produced and edited in a high digital media. The format is edu, is, the format is educational and informational, and is designed to promote your educational messages within the context of our storyline. Production includes interviews, narration, program set design, script writing, video photography, graphics, music, editing, high-end computer-generated graphics, and 2D animation and/or graphics with our logos. Phone numbers and websites will be, will complete the production. Educational, commercial televising airings, they will provide the production of one high-end, one-minute educational production segment used for network distribution. Your segment will be broadcast once, prime time over eighty-four million homes via MSNBC, CNBC, CNN, or an equivalent network. Your educational, commercial segment will also be aired four hundred times in many of the top four hun, or one hundred direct marketing areas during peak and prime time on network TVs such as CNBC, CNN, CNN Headline News, Fox Business Network, Learning Channel, Family TV, Discovery Channel, and/or equivalent networks. A media schedule will be set in advance to guarantee these spots, and post-airing affidavits, proof of the airing, will be provided following the airings. Internet distribution, and then they give a project cycle. The important part, we will have questionnaires that they will want. The cost, Morgan County and the City of Fort Morgan, which Morgan County has already stated they will not participate in this, it will be between the Tourism Board and the City of Fort Morgan. And the cost for the, our portion of the production would be twenty-three thousand five hundred for underwriting scheduling fees, and upon, would be payable upon receipt of our invoice. Then there would be a three thousand five hundred dollar location fee, which would be bringing in the cinematographers and the videographers of that. Morgan Tourism Board has stated that they will pick up that portion of it. So, I guess if, if everybody has looked at what has been on here, is this something that we would like to pursue for our economic development side of things, and where do we come up with the funds? And if we do, we'll have to expedite. If not, then we will pass, and I will inform the producer that we are not interested, and they will find some where else to do it. Any comments, questions?
What I like about it is that it's definitely a professional, like, production company. They've obviously done this with other, whether it's organizations or cities, so I think it's a good price for the benefit. But since it hasn't been budgeted for this year, just getting creative, or if we dip into Sarah's bucket, and I don't know if she's, yeah, so I just, I think it's...
She mentioned marketing. I don't, I don't know what the standards are. I haven't heard from Jeff on this. Have you, John, or?
No, I haven't specifically on this project, but I know that there is a marketing budget in the Economic Development and Marketing Department. I don't know what the status of that is right now, and whether there's twenty-three five available, but...
So, it's up to council to make a decision if this is something we want to do or not.
No, I like the idea. Now, do we get a copy of something so we can use in our promotional...
Yes. This also includes, they would do a, a sixty-minute public TV
Sure.
...production where they send, do it out. That's theirs, and that is a quarter of a million dollars, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that they utilize for the production of that. What they produce here is ours, and they will, they utilize ours logo, give our website and contact information when it's aired in the outside marketing area with the hundred large cities, San Francisco, and that which comes in here. They will enlist contact information, give our website, and use our logo, contact personnel, and such as that, so.
I think we should make sure that we have full use rights for our marketing.
Well, that would be...
That they give us...
We just can't use Laurence Fishburne's face. We can use our stuff.
Well, and the stuff that they brought out, the five-to-six-minute corporate profile and that is ours.
Something we can use for a marketing, marketing plan.
We can use Laurence Fishburne.
Sure, of course. But there's...
Yes.
I think that one-minute clip that you mentioned, Mayor, that's what I'm most interested in, is being able to share that one-minute clip. The sixty-minute one will be cool, but as far as true marketing, social media, website, that one minute's gonna be the most beneficial, I think, for us.
And did, when you spoke to them, did they indicate that they would have professionals in the area of what exactly we should be putting in there? Because I won't...
They will do these, yes, they will. They will generate, the project cycle is ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty days. It is, come in and do it. Day one, contract signed, organization is scheduled for participation in their project. Days two to fourteen, project fee is due upon receipt, questionnaire, and collateral sent, which is any video or information we have. Days fifteen through fourteen, project is signed to the field producer. Producer reviews the literature and acclimates to the storyline. Forty, days forty-five to seventy-five, scripts written and approved, shoot location determined, and shoot day set. Days seventy-six to ninety, shoot day occurs, and the studio edits film segments. So they do scripting, they set, they pick shoot locations, interviews...
They're just professionals in deciding what's, what's interesting and what is going to grab people when they watch it, because, I mean, we could have thirteen thousand people in Morgan County that all have an opinion on what's the most important thing we need to do.
They will come out and, and do that. The conference call I had between Emily and myself and this Anthony Davis, who is the producer, asked us a lot of questions. You know, what, what is, makes Fort Morgan a good place to live, work, and play? And, you know, I, I gave him what the city was about, and what the, what we have. They called back, and we're, they, they're very interested. So...
And I think that, you know, in the classes or conferences we've been to where they talk about marketing and trying to get the word out there about your towns, and of course that's something that, that every town our size, and bigger and smaller, is trying to do. They talk about that getting your name out there and being able to have people pay attention to it is probably the most difficult aspect. And I think that, you know, having a name and voice like Laurence Fishburne, number one, garners a little bit of attention and maybe a little bit more respect for what they're seeing and everything. But the other thing that I guess is impressive, I mean, I don't know how you would label our target audience and everything, other than, you know, people who are wanting to start up new business, or job-producing businesses and bring them to Fort Morgan, but where they said that you're reaching eighty million-plus people and everything. I would think that it sounds like a really good way to get our name out there and in front of a lot of people, and hopefully it's in front of the right people.
And I know you said this, but could you refresh my memory on just how much of this is gonna cost us?
Twenty-three five.
Our portion for that would be twenty-three thousand five hundred.
It doesn't seem like that much. I mean, I know it's on budget, but I think we can figure out some way to tie it to a budget to make it happen, because to me, this seems like a great opportunity versus just, you know, letting money go to reserves.
I agree with Clint. I think that, find the money somewhere.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Guardian?
Sounds like a go.
If there isn't, I would entertain a resolution, and I guess I will work with Nina and...
Yeah, I might suggest a resolution, moving forward with this project, with funding from the Economic Development and Marketing Budget if available, and if not, from reserves.
Okay. With that, I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution allowing the city to move forward with the television documentary series on diversity for the city of Fort Morgan, with the funds coming, the twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars coming out of the economic development budget if available. If not, for those funds to come out of reserves.
Second? Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
I will let them know there is a interest, and we wish to move forward, keep you abreast of progress. Next is a presentation, possible action on the first reading of an ordinance amending the municipal code concerning initiative and referendum, and request to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance for June fourth. Mr. Brennan and Ms. Williams.
Thank you, your honor. This was an ordinance that was suggested by Jeff Wilson after this year. We had an initiative petition brought to the city, and there was some confusion about whether, you know, what rules applied. There are some provisions in our charter about initiative and referendum, but they're not as complete as the state statutes. And in that case, what's not covered by our charter defaults to the state statute. But what this ordinance will do is make that clear, and just state it explicitly, so that people would know when, if information is not in our charter, they need to go to Title thirty-one, Title thirty-one, Article eleven. And, and the rest of the rules will be in there. And that's, it's primarily a way to clarify the process for the public and make sure everybody's on the same page.
Okay. Any questions regarding this? I would, I think Mr. Wilson pretty well explained it at our last council meeting. If there are none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution on first reading of ordinance number one-two-two-seven, amending the municipal code concerning initiative and referendum, and requesting to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance for June fourth.
Thank you. Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Okay. Next is presentation on the first reading of an ordinance adopting the twenty-eighteen Energy Code, and request to schedule a public hearing for June fourth. Mr. Kirkendall.
As you gave me directions last year when we were having the meeting at the golf course, I'm back.
Hi.
But we had, after doing additional training with Shawna, we come to a conclusion with her recommendation that the twenty-fifteen would probably not be our best decision, so that's why we went to the twenty-eighteen, because that gives the contractors a few more options. And what we also found out is a lot of the contractors, and myself, don't really understand this code, because we don't put it as highly as it probably should be. But there's more options, and they're actually doing a lot of this stuff that they don't even realize that they're meeting the code on the majority of the stuff by just their normal quality controls of how they're building the houses. So it's not a major jump, and we did take out a few of the major stumbling blocks, because one of them was to get people out here to do the, the air tests on the houses and, or the ducts. There's nobody out here, and the cost to get them out here was, like, super more expensive than the front range, because they don't have no competition, and the few that are out in this area have less than they do, so they have to make a living too. So anyway, and we also come to the conclusion that since there's a lot of changes, that we are going to implement a training process after we adopt this, as it's in the memo, and in the next three years, we'll basically go through the codes, go through the different programs out there, all the way up to how to use some of the, the manual Js and manual Ds of how to size your ductwork and all that stuff. So that'll all come out in the next three years. And most of that we can get done at no cost to the city or the contractors. We just need the contractors to be available to come to the program. I've also talked with the City of Brush and the county, and they're on board with the training, whether or not they come to this code or not. At least they'll have the ability to understand the training and be partners with us. So we may hold training over in Brush, or the county building, or whatever we can do to get the most word out for this code. And this is kind of the, this is the code we're going to, is the twenty-eighteen. And then I also found out that... And then I also found out that there's, I don't know if it made it to the, been signed yet or not, but there was a House Bill twenty, or twelve sixty that has to do with the Energy Code. They've changed it where now when you adopt codes, you can only adopt the last, one of the three most recent versions of it, and when before, it just used to be the oh-three. Well, the oh-nine code is what we're enforcing now. We've, we've kind of sunsetted that one out. We've, so we got the twelve, the fifteen, and the eighteen out, and, and that's why we went to the eighteen, because once we get the training in it, then we don't immediately have to jump to another code. We can keep it longer when everybody understands it for the longest period. And then there's some other stuff, I guess, when, if it ever gets signed, you know, like I said, I don't know for a fact if it got signed or not. All I got, could find was that it was sent to the governor on the thirteenth of May. So, and then there's also, and by, if this gets passed in January first, 2020, we have to then let the State Energy Department know what we've done to the code. And with her, with Shawna's supervision to keep, because she writes the code, she's on the Colorado chapter of ICC, so they go wherever these meetings are, countrywide, and they amend and adopt and do all of the stuff on the Energy Code. So she's really knowledgeable on why things are in there, and she's written some of these provisions. So as you can tell, the code is a little bit thicker, because for some reason, each code never gets thinner, it just gets more. But they've split it up, so you have commercial in one section, residential in another section. So I did go through with her direction and guidance, and we did amend a few things out that would take some of the mandatory requirements out, and then it would also help with older buildings where you have to get an R-value in an older building when people are roofing now, but some of the buildings, the fire department is a good example, their roof, if you would have put the thickness of insulation you needed in it, it would have affected the windows. The roof would have been higher than the windows, so obviously that won't work, or, and there's other buildings in town that, that you just put as much as you can have without affecting the drainage system of the existing roof. So we cleared that up, and then with some, some of the provisions that she said, we deleted some other sections that was going to be a real headache, or we changed something that required you to do two things. Now you got an option to do one or the other one and not both of them. So that kind of eliminates some of the, trying to get everybody to do it. But like I said, once this gets adopted, this won't immediately be, here it is, we got to start day one. Our, our, day one is in the memo. We're going to start training on the code book. I did send out a large, an email to a large number of contractors. I have not heard back from any of them yet, but I'm trying to verify dates that most of them could come to, so we could get the training scheduled so that she can come out here and we can start this process, both for city staff and contractors, so we all are hearing the same stuff, discussing, and go over the different requirements of the code, and then start understanding what do we need to get there if we're not already there. But like I said, the last training we did, most of the stuff that was in the 2015 code is they were already doing it, they just didn't realize they were doing it, but that was their normal standard quality control, already made them do it. And the, the commercial ones do it without even a second thought, because, you know, like FedEx and all the hotels, anything they can do to save a dime on anything to operate that building, they're, they're all for it. So LED lighting and, and high-efficient heating systems and extra insulation and all that other stuff, that's just, that's just second hat on all of the large commercial buildings because they're trying to cut cost of operations wherever they can. So, anyway, that's, if you have any other questions for me, I'll be glad to, glad to help answer them, I guess.
So in the past, if there were areas of the code, like the electric code, or that we could exempt from portions of it, is that something, are we adopting this in entirety?
No. We, we have, as per the amendment, we have the sections that we've highlighted. Those are things that we're amending that's not in the code. I, like going through it with her, that we were trying to not get ourselves into trouble. If this Senate bill does get passed as it's written, there are some things that we can't just cut a bunch of stuff out of it. We have to meet a certain standard, and like I said, I'm not sure if it may be law now, it may not, I don't know if it's actually been signed, but, so with her help and her direction, we went through and, and went through these items here to, to go through that we put in the amendment to, either delete it out or change the wording just a tad, so we identified, and one of them was to allow residential still to use the, the building cavity for return air, except for exterior walls, which to me was logical anyway, but we just had to make sure everybody didn't understood that, so. And that was, once we got rid of the air, the duct test system requirement being mandatory, that pretty much still left us to use that cavity, because if you do the duct test system on building cavities, you can't seal them tight enough and you won't pass. So it's just, then the commercial, like I said, there are some variable systems that I wasn't quite sure of, but she recommended that we, like section C one oh-three point six point three, the, she said, you probably, it's a system operation control. She recommended that we just not go there and just get rid of that completely, so that's why we deleted that one, so that that would minimize some cost on, that's, and since she writes the code and she's real versed on it, so we took her direction with that. But if you have any questions on any of the ones that we put in the memo, all the ones you got in your ordinance is the ones we amended, and that's the only part we're amending.
Okay.
Is there any questions for Mike or Eric?
Thanks for being so thorough and, yeah, helping local contractors get on board and train together.
Okay. I would entertain setting a public hearing.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve the first reading of ordinance one-two-two-eight to amend Chapter twenty-one, Article four of the Fort Morgan Municipal Code, and I schedule that public hearing for June fourth, 2019.
Second. I have a, I have a, I guess it's a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously?
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Two things. If anybody wants to look at the book, they can come down to my office, it'll be available for anybody that wants to look through the book. They just need to come in, we'll make it available to them. And also, I'd like to put the word out to all the contractors, HVAC, and the builders, and even the electricians, if you can respond to me that, a dates that would work for you, we'll work towards getting dates, because I know everybody's getting busy, but we still need to get the training before we start implementing all of the rules.
I'll schedule my time. If I'm not there, start without me.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Next is presentation on the first reading of an ordinance regarding the inter-local agreement for membership in the National Public Gas Association, and request to schedule a public hearing for, on an ordinance for June fourth. Mr. Nation.
I'm back. I'm not going to let you off like Mike just did. We're going to go through this line by line.
Next one.
Answer all your questions. That's why Nina's here tonight. And I know Clint loves that, so.
Absolutely. Been here all night.
Good to hear. So, we, we met with you two weeks ago and discussed the possibility of changing our, into a full member with NPGA. Now, tonight, I bring in front of you all of the necessary paperwork that goes along with that, so. Sorry, just, these are all the necessary hoops that we got to jump through with making this change on our, on our gas utility. So the first one we have in front of you, you've got copies of the, this is just basically our membership agreement for becoming a full member with NPGA. I know Nina has looked at this, and she is the one that's drafted the ordinance that you have in front of you. So at this point, this is pretty much their standard document that all of the member towns that belong to NPGA have, and so what you have in front of you is that ordinance, so we need a resolution to do the first reading on this, and I think set the public hearing on this one, right? Yeah. So I would be happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure Nina would be able to chime in if we got any particular legal questions, so.
Does anybody have any questions? I think we pretty much covered it at our last presentation at the last meeting. Seeing done, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution authorizing first reading of ordinance number one-two-two-nine regarding an interlocal agreement for membership in the National Public Gas Agency, and request to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance for June fourth.
Second. I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, and a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously?
All right. Thank you very much on that one.
Okay. The next one is possible action on a first reading of an ordinance for a gas supply agreement and total requirement supply with National Public Gas Agency, and to request to schedule a public hearing for June fourth.
Okay. Pretty much the same thing. This gets a little more specific. This is more in line with what we do with our tariffs when we change rates or make any major change to our gas utility. We're now looking at it from NPGA's side. You see the various documents that you have, some of them look familiar to our tariff documents. We get into what their pricing is and how they handle billing and all that. So this is more specifics of what it becomes to join. We really don't see anything, like we explained two weeks ago, we're not going to see any major changes with operations or how we schedule and, and how Tony does operations. It's just kind of that hurdle you have to go through since we're a utility on this, and if we were changing companies, it would be a little more obvious why we're doing these readings, but we're just moving up in membership class, so it's a little bit strange, but still the hoop we're jumping through tonight. So be happy to answer any questions there, but nothing that we didn't discuss in detail two weeks ago.
Yeah, that's good.
Questions or comments for Brent? Seeing done, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve the first reading of ordinance one-two-zero for a gas supply agreement of total requirement supply with National Public Gas Agency, and to schedule a public hearing for June fourth.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously?
Thank you very much.
Next is a presentation on appointing a director and alternate to the Board of National Public Gas Agency. Mr. Nation again.
This one helps me fulfill my lifelong goal of becoming a resident of the state of Nebraska.
Yes.
No, joking. Typical, like we have with MEAN, we have positions on the board. Once they accept our membership, they always request that we appoint a director and then a alternate director to that. Both of those positions have voting rights, depending on who's at the meeting, and so they need an official resolution from you, the governing body, appointing those two members. And so we're here tonight asking that you appoint me as the director and then Jeff as the alternate director for the NPGA board spot.
Okay. Pretty straightforward. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution appointing a director and an alternate to the Board of the National Public Gas Agency.
Second. I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, and a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brent.
I need help moving in Nebraska.
Go Herbie.
Next is a presentation on replacing the city manager's vehicle. Ms. Kirk.
I'll take care of this, Your Honor. You've probably noticed that the city manager is not here tonight. I'm filling in for him. He's at an economic development conference for half of this week, and then he'll be in Nebraska for the rest of the week. The city manager is provided with a vehicle as part of his employment contract. Last summer or spring, I guess, he was rear-ended by another vehicle, a pickup truck, in, while he was on a trip to Nebraska for a MEAN meeting. His car was totaled. Fortunately, one of the city manager from Ray was nearby, saw, didn't, I don't know if he witnessed the accident, but he stopped and helped Jeff and got him to, back to his hotel and stuff. Anyway, the other driver, their insurance covered the liability for the accident. The, the vehicle was at that point six or seven years old and had about eighty thousand miles on it, so we got about eight thousand dollars from the insurance of, of the other driver. So now it's, it's past time to replace that vehicle, and Jeff is requesting that we purchase a replacement vehicle from Airlac Toyota. It would be the exact model as the 2012 model that he purchased at that time for about twenty-five thousand dollars. This one is about twenty-nine thousand four hundred. And there are rebates between a thousand and fifteen hundred dollars available, so he thinks he can get it for under twenty-eight thousand dollars, and it would come out of the city's self-insurance account, so. Looking for approval of that transaction.
Are there any questions or comments?
Seems like a standard insurance replacement of a vehicle.
Seeing done, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution authorizing the replacement of the city manager's vehicle in an amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously?
Next is consent agenda. Ms. Dunn.
Item A, under the consent agenda is approval of disbursements and payroll for April. Item B is approval of the minutes of the May seventh, 2019 city council regular meeting. All matters listed under item sixteen, consent agenda, are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
I would entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously?
Next is public comment, audience participation for items not on the agenda.
Hello, thank you for allowing us to...
There's a sign-in sheet there. Would you mind signing in on that, please?
Thank you for allowing us to talk today. My name is Diane Schulte, and I'm the owner of The Flower Peddler and The Dressing Room, and this is Mallory Rudnick, the owner of The Double R Embroidery. We're here representing some of the concerned downtown businesses. We appreciate you taking time to listen. The issue we are wanting to address is that of allowing residential apartments onto street-level Main Street. As you know, there are four apartments currently under construction in between our two businesses. Our goal is to help you understand... Our goal is to help you understand the impact that it is having on us. Number one, we were not notified of any apartments going in. Um, we have personally already lost inventory on the, when they were doing construction that has fallen off of our walls. Um, the dumpsters were overfilled and they've all been filled with construction debris. Um, and what did not make it into the dumpster has not been picked up. It's all over, um, outside the dumpster. The nails, there's been nails all over in the alley where we've had to pick them up to keep from driving over them. And also out front on the sidewalk on Main Street where we've had to pick them up, so nobody stepped on them or it didn't wind up in our business. We've also received notices from our insurance letting us know that there is a possibility that our insurance will be increased due to added risk.
So, those are just some of the problems that we've already encountered, but we foresee many more in the future, such as cooking smells coming into our buildings, a parking issue, household noises affecting our daily business, structural concerns, loitering outside and making our customers uncomfortable. And having residents in the middle of the shopping district does not necessarily help us attract people. It actually may deter and hurt existing businesses. Um, we also feel like it takes away from the history of downtown Fort Morgan Shopping District. We are not nine-to-five businesses. There are times when we're running all hours of the night, um, and this is our job, our business and our livelihoods. So, we're hoping that you will make the decision to change the zoning, so there's no longer residential on the street level. Thank you for listening to us and we appreciate all that you do for the city.
Thank you. I believe where that's gonna be on the next.
It's set for the June 4th discussion, this, uh, this, um, topic, right John?
I think so. I don't have the future agendas.
Oh yeah, we spoke about, um.
Yeah, it, it's on the table for discussion.
And, um, Steve and I have spoken about it and we just need council direction and that's why it'll be, you guys will discuss it and kinda let us know how you want the ordinance to look. Cause we, um, I think the city knows, you guys know, this is, this is an issue that should be addressed in some fashion.
So, you guys are really persuasive. You already have things happening before you even finished talking.
And I think Steve would tell you that there are some complexities involved and that's why we have to be careful to do it right the first time, um, when we, it's, it's not a, just a straight zoning issue. It's kind of an overlay thing, which I don't completely understand myself, but, um, so it's a little bit complicated, but it's something we're working on.
That's why we have Steve.
That's right.
And Jeff Wilson.
John, is there, uh, are they gonna continue what they're doing down there?
I don't have any reason to believe they aren't. Um, it's a, it's a use by right in the zoning, um, that is currently down there.
And thank you Diane for, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to address that question, cause it's a great question. At this point, uh, it was a use by right that's allowed, you know, in the zone currently and he has started, so at this point you can't take that right. Um, that would be a very difficult court battle, I'm pretty sure. So, he's grandfathered in at this point. Now, should the use cease for a certain period of time, and I believe that's six months, then, and the zoning were changed or an overlay district was created, which is what we're working on, then he would not be allowed to bring that use back in that case, once the, once the rules are changed. But at this point, he, he is operating under current law and would be allowed to continue to do that.
That's for the building of, of the, of the use.
Of the apartment.
But there's other things that were mentioned that maybe staff could speak to, um, you know, or maybe address with, you know, the issues of the dumpsters and that kinda thing.
Yeah, I mean, obviously that's, that's a concern we have there and all over town. You know, we do encounter folks that are remodeling or constructing something and it's against ordinance to put construction debris or, or overflow the dumpsters and so, that's first I've heard of it and certainly will address that tomorrow with, with the sanitation crew and make sure that, you know, they're keeping, uh, up on those things. And, uh, I'll have Mike visit with the contractor tomorrow and make sure that they understand that that's, that's not what we do here. And if you wanna be a good neighbor, let's be a good neighbor. And that's not the way to, to pursue that, so, uh, certainly can address that and, and, you know, with the complexity of the overlay zoning, the B1 zoning is a large district. It goes clear out to, you know, Arby's and clear out to, you know, Edwards and, and clear out to Tractor Supply. So, we have to be careful just saying we're gonna change the B1 zoning because it's a very big area. So, what we're trying to look at is an overlay district that would encompass some part of the downtown that is of concern. And, uh, I know Nina's worked on an ordinance in Salida that allowed for residents on upper floors, but not on ground floors. And that's certainly, I think, uh, what we wanna see down there, at least what I've heard from, from some of the folks that are concerned is, we don't mind necessarily having residences, but let's get them on the upper floors, not on ground floor. And, but when we bring those things forward, I just wanna make sure that we don't miss something. I don't wanna rush into something and change a, change a law and then, and then have a negative effect. Sign code comes to mind. We rushed the sign code even though we spent twelve months on it and we actually caused some problems, you know, trying to rush that through. And I don't, I don't wanna do that in this case. We don't have anybody knocking the door down, you know, to do more apartments on the ground floor and if we did, we could certainly talk about moratoriums or something in that case to address that. Um, but we do wanna do it right and we wanna make sure that we get the right rules in place and, and have some conversations and, and, uh, you know, treat this correctly. And so, that's what we're working to do. We'll talk about that at the next meeting, uh, just all the questions that we have and, and concerns that have come up. Parking is one that comes up. Do we want to put special rules in place for residences in that zone for parking, but not on the businesses in that zone? So, it's just these things that we just need to think about, so we'll be talking a lot more about that.
Are we talking with the, the downtown people, making sure we're?
We, all we've done at this point is we've heard that, that there's some concerns and, uh, Jeff, uh, started the process and said, hey, we need to do something and, and approached Nina. Um, and then I got brought into the loop at that point, but we've had very little conversation, even internally about it, just because it just occurred last week. Uh, I started to see a flurry of emails last Monday and, uh, that's how much conversation we've had. So, I, I do think we'll have some public comment period, but we just need to get our own internal ducks in a row before we start that process, cause, uh, you know, I was brought in after that conversation had already started, so.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, thanks Steve.
Yeah.
When we talked to the contractor, right, it sounds like one thing to be sure, besides just dumping beside the dumpsters, is making sure they're picking up those nails.
Yeah.
I think that that's kinda ridiculous, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's, that's not being a good neighbor and we'll make sure that they're aware of that and I'll make sure Mike goes and visits him tomorrow.
Okay, super.
Yeah.
And Diane and Mallory, I just wanna thank you guys for coming. And Diane, since you weren't able to be here at our last meeting, just wanted to congratulate you for, um, your award for being the business that was selected.
It, it happens.
Thank you for bringing that forward. Um, next is reports by officials and staff.
I have a speak on the.
Oh, I'm, I, sorry.
My name's Adam Holt and I run the Brown Schufett here in town. Um, speaking on kind of behalf of a lot of the three hundred, especially the three hundred block of Main Street on the downtown and we are a little concerned on the, the Thursday Night Live concerts and the street closures that are going on there. I know the plan right now is to block off three or four blocks of downtown to have street vendors and food and all that kinda up and down there and we're just a little bit concerned on doing that every single Thursday night. Um, there was word that we were kind of talked before, before this decision was done and none of us were actually talked to about this before we had a police officer in our building kinda handing us a note of the street closure. So, just a little bit concerned on the, the procedures and the process that was happening before that. Um, and the, the biggest thing is just, it's, it's every Thursday night for, it's just a couple hours, but it is for nine weeks in a row. Um, we were talking to, a couple emails with Sarah about, about the event and she was trying to compare us to Fort Collins and, um, there's a Thursday night concert that go on every night, every Thursday night down there. And I grew up in Fort Collins, so I've pretty familiarized with those concerts and they don't, it's a great event and, but they don't shut down the streets per se to do these. And we're actually real thankful that the city's trying to do some stuff to try to get people down there and it's not the street closures we're against because, um, we do it for the car show and it's one of the best events that we have here and we got literally thousands of people up and down Main Street that are going to their shops and checking them out and, but it's, it's like a special event that it's just a one weekend, then Bobstock, uh, been trying to get, I bet Lindsay's probably tired of me bringing it up as far as, I think it'd be great, there's another event in Fort Collins called New West Fest. I don't know if any of you guys have been to it, but they shut down the, they actually shut down the streets and they have multiple sound stages and they have the vendors kinda up and down Main Street there, so it, it's a draw to get people away from the park to those businesses, to those vendors. So, there's gotta be some sort of draw away from the park to get people down there. So, it's not the, necessarily the street closures we're against because some of those can actually be really good for business. It's just how it's set up, if there's gonna be enough vendors up and down, um, if we're gonna have the electricity, I guess, for the vendors, cause that's always been a concern. Talking to Lindsay as far as Bobstock is concerned, is getting power to those vendors, to the stage, and that's always been a concern with Bobstock, with the city as far as getting that power to it. Um, so it's, it's not necessarily the, like I said, not the street closures we're against, it's the, the involvement and letting us know some of this stuff ahead of time, partnering with the downtown businesses, so we can partner with us and you guys to get some of this stuff up and rolling. So, just kind of a, a concern, um, that it's just gonna be nine weeks in a row of the events and we're gonna have the, I guess the sustainability to, to support it.
What would be your suggestion then on the closures? Um, once a month, um, once every other week? What would, what, what would be your guys' suggestion?
My, my understanding that it's, it's thirty vendors right now and that's a good chunk, but is it going to be enough to fill up three full city blocks? Like on Bobstock, we probably have high about that amount of vendors and they just block off two streets. So, is there going to be enough vendors to fill up every single one? So, I think a lot of us are for shutting off the blocks like we kinda do for Bobstock. Doing that kind of as a, a test run, see if there's gonna be enough people to go down there to even fill up that area before we plan on shutting down every single block on downtown.
And, I don't know, can, can we ask? I guess my question would be is, are we intending to have vendors in City Park or will all of the vendors be up and down Main Street? Because to me that was, that would be better. If you don't have vendors in City Park, then they're. Please.
And, uh, I'm not the expert, Sarah's the expert, but I've been sitting in a lot of the meetings. Um, my understanding is the way we're looking at setting it up right now is we'll have food vendors on every single block, all the way up to Railroad. Um, we will have nonprofits dispersed amongst them. Um, we have a DJ, uh, DJ Ripem, he's from Denver. Um, his YouTube is on the Facebook page, it's pretty cool. Um, he'll be playing on the Showmobile more on this side of Main. Um, and we've talked to Doug and worked out the electricity, uh, mainly for the Showmobile so that we can have a couple different locations and it can be moved off and on different weeks up and down Main Street. The vendors, as far as electricity, right now, we're asking, um, vendors if they need electricity to bring a generator, um, so that we're not trying to figure out power all over the place. But we've got a really good start. Um, the music from the DJ, we are contracting with Kenan Productions on that as well and they'll have, uh, multiple speaker sets somehow wirelessly, I'm not sure how he's gonna do it, he's kind of a magician when it comes to that stuff. But if the DJ's playing, you know, up here, there'll be a second set of speakers farther down to spread that music up and down Main Street. So, from five to six-thirty, it'll be, uh, live DJ on Main Street and then the concert starts at six-thirty. But our hope is to really, the whole goal is to push traffic up and down Main Street. So, all those kid activities, the petting zoo, the pony rides, bouncy houses, food vendors, it, the focus is on Main Street. There might be few things in the park, um, possibly a little bit more in the park during National Night Out, so we can concentrate the PD's presence around the park for National Night Out, but on the regular Thursdays, it, the whole focus is now on Main Street and that's why we're rebranding it and no longer, it's no longer live in the park, it's Thursday Night Live Downtown Fort Morgan because we're trying to promote the downtown. Um, I was gonna say one other thing, but it's gonna be fun. I think the reason Sarah really wanted to be consistent every Thursday night is to try to build and grow that crowd. Um, I think if, you know, the parties in the parks were great, right? We, I think four or five years ago, we did three and then we did two and now we kinda bookend the concert series, what we used to do. We need to build that consistency and really that's what will allow us to market this event so that people know, hey, on Thursday night, I can go downtown, I can walk around, I can shop, I can listen to music, I can, um, meet with my community members, my council members, I can communicate and we can grow our community as a whole, rather than just in isolated little pieces. That's kinda the idea. I don't know if that answers any questions.
Does that help to address?
It does, it's just it's, and I, we all appreciate, um, trying to grow it, but it's just, it's the, every, every week with that closure and it's just, it's, it's involving, I guess involving us to begin with. Um, and if the, I hundred percent agree that it, it needs to be an every week type of thing in order to grow that stuff. Especially I, I grew up in Fort Collins, so I, I'm real familiar, like, just real familiar with some of these events that they try to do that we're trying to, try to copy and get people down there and as businesses, we love that foot traffic, we really do. Um, it's just, it's the, just the street closures every single week and if that's a necessary thing to do every week for nine weeks straight.
Would you not anticipate that it's gonna increase traffic in your store?
It's, it's possible. It, it all depends on the, the draw from City Park down there. Typically on the Thursday night concerts, it's, I guess we don't know until we, we try.
Right.
Typically on the Thursday night concerts, it's, it's a free concert that it, it, people are there to just kinda enjoy their evening, but it, it's never been a big event to do every single week for nine weeks straight. And, uh, to me and to some of the other businesses, we're just concerned that if you do it every single week for that many weeks, you still have some of that luster there to it. Um, instead of the car show, it's always good. Bobstock, I'd love to see it up and down Bobstock, so try it for Bobstock Weekend where it's one giant event for all day long, where it's, it's not so much back and forth with every single, every single week with the closures. It's just, it's a concern that I myself have and a lot of the businesses have as far as if it's, if the payoff's gonna be there. And a lot of times we don't know until we try.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right and I, I think we're trying to capitalize on the fact, we have had the concerts, um, for nine weeks or eight weeks generally in a row, um, every single week and we're trying to capitalize on that number of people being near downtown and, you know, a block from your store.
Right.
Uh, in the park watching a concert. So, we're trying to get them onto Main Street and, um, you know, there will be attractions in each block. There will be kid things, there will be informational booths, there'll be arts and crafts booths, there will be food. Um, and I, you know, I, I think, um, I think you should give it a chance. food, um, and I, you know, I, I think, um, I think you should give it a chance, I, you know, I, and, you know, we, at this point, we're pretty committed, we're committed to the concert series and, um, you know, if, if it turns out to be a disaster, um, you know, then we tried, but if not, you know, it may be something that you, um, are really happy with.
Yeah.
The other thing to remember, this is nine weeks of the year that all those businesses can have sidewalk sales without going to get a permit. Any other time of the year, it's my understanding, they would need to come get some kind of permit to have a sale on the sidewalk, I don't-
Yeah, they don't have to do it every time, they just have to get it annually, but, yeah, and we are encouraging and from what Sarah tells me, and in, in Sarah's defense, i- it's my understanding, she's talked to most of the businesses downtown and-
She, she did after the fact.
Well-
Like, she did-
That is a completely inaccurate statement.
Well, it's, it's the knowledge that I've got, um, and I don't know that you can speak for the entire downtown either.
I'm sorry, we're all here.
Yeah, okay.
So anybody that runs a downtown business, please stand up.
Okay, and none of you heard from Sarah?
No.
Well, we, we did after the fact, after all this was set into place. So it was, we, we got, we kept hearing that everybody in the downtown area was for it and it just, it, it's not true. Um, we didn't, I met her finally about a, a week ago, but we were, we were handed a notice from a police officer about the intentions of the closures. So it, it's-
Well, I think that, that was a flyer about the whole event, right?
Well, it sounds like the downtown is okay with attempting what they're trying to do, the process that transpired in getting there could have been a, a little different. We're, they're scheduled to try it, I, I would really appreciate feedback after it's, it's been in place and, and run for a while and see if, if it is a, a benefit or, um, you know, are we spinning our wheels on it and, and once it, we get an opportunity to see what it does. Um, I guess I had one question, is the city still gonna do their barbecue, their free barbecue or, I know that was always one of the biggest draws for downtown area is free.
Right, so at this point, we're not doing a free meal.
Okay.
The focus will be on the vendors and supporting the businesses.
Okay.
Uh, we are talking about National Night Out doing some kind of, something along those lines.
Okay.
The only thing that I'd like to add to that is-
With new approach to the microphone.
Is, is, that, that doesn't really align because if we're gonna be partners in this, we should have been involved from the get-go of what the intentions are. Who are these vendors? Are they our competitors from another community? So we're gonna have concerns about that. Blocking the streets, now you have no access to some businesses, like computer sales, these, the people walking up and down the street looking for a hot dog and a concert, they're not gonna pop into a store, you know, it's, it just doesn't, it doesn't align. And I think that the foot traffic is great and the idea of closing the street to bring that foot traffic down, downtown in front of all the businesses, we're all for that, of course. But the hesitation that we have is, we weren't involved in it in the beginning, at least notified. I mean, this is, this is our livelihood, it's right there and you're gonna close the street, so ideally, nobody has access to it other than foot traffic. Well, that may, in a different way, limit, limit the vendors, limit the customers, I should say. So, that's kind of our angst, we hope it's great, we hope that it, you know, floods the people and then, heck, let's go to ten weeks, right?
Well, I think, you know, I think we hope that you guys embrace the idea and keep your doors open.
It's, it's much easier to embrace an idea on the front side of it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and I think at this point, it's just a, we, we gotta try new things to try to stimulate your vendors.
Oh, absolutely.
We live that every day.
Yep, yeah, we're, we're not, we're not against trying new things and growing events, that's definitely not what this is about, it, it's the partnering up with us and the city to, to bring this stuff together so we can continue to, to grow and get people down there. So it, it says on our sign, people partnership progress, it's, it is that partnership between us and the city. So it, so it's, it's all, we're all in, in this together.
And I guess I have a question, uh, maybe just because a lot of downtown business owners are here, is my understanding that there is a downtown business association that's being currently developed?
We're working on it.
And so then hopefully that could stem some, open up the communication and hopefully we can partner and, and if, find the successes from this year and then also improve for the upcoming years. So if there, there are concerns, just make note of it and then whenever those meetings come forth, just voice those concerns and hopefully we can improve on this. I'm not saying it's gonna be perfect this year, but I think if we can at least get some ideas and get some feedback on how to improve it, that could really benefit. So if, if there is that association, which is my understanding that it's in the process of being formed, that we really take advantage of that opportunity.
So, I don't wanna beat, beat a dead horse, but I will say two things that I'd like to state. Number one, I find it very interesting that I just had a gentleman come through my office and I had to sign a petition so that for the, um, I wanna call it Hot August Nights, the car show, that, um, he had to get a petition signed with X number of signatures on it to close the street. Was there any communication or signatures or, uh, formal agreement by business owners to close the street for this?
Yeah, but you gotta remember, the streets are owned by the city, I think with that, and that's the difference. The thing, other thing I would ask real quick here and, and I don't know what the timeframes are and everything, but how many of you guys have your business open after five o'clock typically? It's almost everybody, so see shows, I wasn't aware of that and everything too, but I, I think that, you know, and I can understand completely what you're saying, there wasn't enough communication on the front end. And I'm glad that you came forward to talk to us about it, but I, I think that if you really look at it, it's a real effort by Sarah and again, I agree, should have talked to you guys beforehand, but I think, you know, the whole thing is geared towards trying to help your business, trying to increase the foot traffic down there. And, you know, if you guys have more ideas about how the city can help downtown and make sure we keep it vibrant, I know she'd be more than willing to listen to you and talk to you about it, but-
I'll, I'll speak on my behalf, I'm more than happy to have those conversations, I'm on the brush chamber board and we're going through those same discussions and trying to come up with ideas, so I am one hundred percent welcome to engage in that. I will tell you that for most of the retail businesses, this is a fantastic idea and I'm not against it, it will hurt me. I have companies and individuals that carry computers into my shop. Now, how am I going to ask a sixty-year-old lady to come in and pick up her computer and carry it three blocks away to get it in her car because she hasn't know where to park? So for me personally, it hurts my business and I think you could appreciate that. So I am not against and shutting down the streets for periods of time, as he mentioned earlier, for a Bob Stock, for a car show, for something like that, but now you're taking one day a week, every week, out of my potential to do business with my customers.
Oh, we're taking three hours out of the evening.
You're taking the evening, which is when a lot of people and, pick up from me. My busiest time is from four to six, is when everybody's picking it up because they're getting off work, stuff like that.
Right.
So, there, there is a large effect on me and so, again, on special events or something like that, a Saturday, fantastic, but when you're doing it in the middle of the week like that, you're really affecting, and I'm not the only business that's that way down there, I'm just the only one that is that type, type of setup. Again, I wanna stipulate, am I against helping all retail in every fashion that doesn't, is not in my situation, not at all. I do have stuff that you can just come in and buy and you put it in your pocket and walk out, so I'm not against it a hundred percent, don't get me wrong, but when you're doing it on a very consistent basis like that, you are affecting a piece of that business. And unfortunately, in my business, nobody can plan for it. It happens when it happens and I gotta get my, you know, get my business done, so I've gotta go pick up my computer. See where I'm at?
So, I, I think a lot of times, it's just that, like, for the car show, for me, it's one of my busiest weekends. So, it, it is shut down and there is lots of business, people walking up and down. So it, it's a, I think so many times, it's a special event, sometimes mean more, but, like I said, we, on this one, we don't know until we try.
I think the fence is probably the bottom line.
It's the process and how, how we did it, that is one of the biggest concerns, I think.
Are you gonna do a couple Bob Stocks then?
Yeah, Bob Stock guy, we can-
Lindsay's adamantly in favor of it, it looks like.
So, when, didn't you already sign in once?
What's that?
Didn't you already sign in once?
Yes. I have so much respect for these people that work downtown all the time, but I'm eleven months into owning a downtown business. The only one that's, um, open from about after seven o'clock till almost midnight. And this is very difficult for me because these are good friends and, and partners, but I am one hundred percent in favor of it and the reason that is, and I think it is, is because I was brought in on the front end. And I think that's where the disconnect is with these guys. And it was because of Bob Stock and event planning and things like that. We didn't, um, take the lead on going and talking to the people downtown, I was, we assumed that was happening, but I can tell them and I'll tell you guys, Sarah's main focus is to bring life to the three blocks of that main part of downtown. I agree with it to, in a sense, I, I know you guys, it's a struggle, but if it's not done consistently, it will not work. If it's gonna be a Thursday, it has to be every Thursday. And our business has the opportunity to suffer about as bad as anybody's, but I think for the, um, the life of downtown, particularly that three hundred block, I'm in favor of, of this project. And again, I believe it's because I've been on, in on the, on the front end of it, not planning or anything like that, but at least I've known about it and attended some meetings, so, um, no disrespect to any of you guys because I know it's a struggle.
I'm taken.
But, 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 and the other thing I would say, let's commit to this damn thing, let's make it happen, let's just stop waiting to see if it's gonna happen, let's invite our friends, let's go out and promote it, let's go out and make this happen. When we do an event, we usually commit to a five-year plan because years one and two are usually awful. But look at Bob Stock twelve years later. Bob Stock wasn't Bob Stock when it was down at Riverside, it, it takes time. And I have a vision of that three, four and two hundred blocks of Main Street as being so much more vibrant and no empty buildings and an exciting part of town and people, where people wanna come, not only Thursday nights, but every night. And that's my vision, so I hope, I wish I would have shared with that with you guys outside of this venue and I'm sorry I haven't, but darn it, we're gonna make this thing work and I'm gonna be a big part of it, so, thanks.
Thanks Wayne. One other thing that I would offer that came to mind when we was talking about that is you may not see increased business on Thursday night, but you're gonna get a lot of increased exposure. Like, I didn't find out about your store until a month ago when I was driving downtown. If people are walking up and down the streets, they're going to be paying more attention and they're gonna see that. So it, it may affect that part of your business, but you're liable to get a lot more exposure. So, I, like I said, I think if you guys, like I said, let's, just as you were saying, let's give it a try and let's see how it works. And, you know, if it doesn't work, then everybody sit down and try and figure out how to tweak it or whatever, but-
I don't think very many, very many of us are against it, so don't get us wrong on that. So it, it, it was never intended to be, let's not do it. It's, it's involving us.
And I think Wayne brought that up.
Partnering with us instead of, so we're, like I said, we're, we're in this together, it, it shouldn't be us versus you guys or vice versa.
And I think we can commit, um, we can commit, I think, the city can commit to doing a follow-up immediately after these events go on to bring everybody, while it's still fresh in everybody's mind and let's talk about what worked, what didn't work, what should we do to do it, like Wayne said, let's have a plan, let's have a five-year plan, what should we do for next year, what shouldn't we do for next year? And I think, I, I think Sarah will absolutely be in favor of doing that and I think it would be awesome if you guys could manage to pull together the downtown business association again, because then you could, she could have gone to one entity and then that spreads like wildfire to everybody else. It just makes it easier instead of trying to hot and peck and get everybody. So I think, you know, if, if we, are you guys okay with if we commit to, we're gonna do a follow-up at the end and find out what worked and what didn't work, we're gonna take you guys' input and-
I, I would say even halfway through, I mean, we're three weeks in and, and you're, they're seeing issues, then let us know and we'll try to-
We'd definitely like your feedback.
I mean, I mean, if it's, if, I mean, like honestly, if it's not going great or there are problems, let us know, don't wait till nine weeks have gone past, let us know, we have, you know, after the third week, the six weeks and the nine weeks, I mean, we need to know, all our numbers are published online and if you don't, can't find it, find a way to get hold of me.
And reach out to Sarah, I mean, she should be your first line of defense for, you know, if something's, if it's a little, it's a, something that needs to be tweaked immediately, she's probably your best bet to go there and say, you know, this isn't working, you put a vendor that sells flowers right in front of my store, let's not do that. So I think, I think working together and, you know, we can work out the details of how to make sure the communication.
And it is good exposure, it is, if, if we can get people down there and moving around, it, like I said, it, it can be really good. So it's, it was just some concerns that we had as far as, I think the overall involvement with us, so.
I think one other thing is, like Clint was talking about, if you work on getting the downtown association so that when Sarah needs to contact you guys and everything like that, rather than having to go to each individual, which, when you look at the numbers, becomes a little formidable and really time-consuming, if there's a contact person or you have some sort of network that spreads it out to all the downtown business holders, that'd be something else that would make it easier in the future too, going both ways.
And, and we were handed a, a slip, but it was from a police officer instead of Sarah. So, stuff like that, as far as, so we could have somebody to have those answers to, because when the police officer dropped it off, I read through it and had some questions, like, I don't know. So it, it's just, it's, it's just those, it's those little things that can make a difference.
And we greatly appreciate you guys all coming in tonight and bringing this, you know, to council's attention, you know, it's something, you know, we, we, we need to hear if things aren't going well, we appreciate everybody coming in and coming in and forced to show us that, you know, there's some-
We look forward to your feedback.
Yeah.
So, and-
Sounds good, awesome.
All right.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Wayne. Reports from officials and staff.
Thank you, Your Honor, I've just got one quick announcement, the swimming pool is gonna open on Saturday, June first. Um, it'll be open one to five PM Monday through Friday and also on weekends, um, for open swim and there will be family evening swim on Tuesday evenings from six to eight. And, uh, there's information on the website about fees and hours and all that good stuff. Um, I, I know Steve has a little presentation he wants to do, or does anybody else have any other announcements?
So is the pool-
Steve Sampson.
Is the pool gonna be open rain, shine, or snow?
Snow, yes, I think, I think the lifeguards may have been training today in the snow.
Hazard pay.
Bad information, bad information.
Yeah.
So, um, when we were talking earlier about education, we, we just wanted to say, I wanted to say thank you because I am working on the Certified Public Manager Certificate and Steve wanted to mention that Lorelei just, Lorelei Kilker just got her WSI training certificate, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, so, so both Lorelei Kilker are, um-
Programming.
Recreation Coordinator and oversees the pool, as well as Chelsea Linton, who's been a Assistant Pool Manager of the pool for several years, both have received their Red Cross certification as, um, lifeguard instructors, so they can certify lifeguards, which helps us, it makes us more sustainable for the future and less dependent upon other individuals.
WSI water safety and-
That is, so that's coming up, Chelsea's hopefully gonna do that. Um, I will also say that when I talked to Lorelei afterward, she said that is, single-handedly, one of the most difficult things she's ever done in her life. Like, and those, those Red Cross trainings are, they can be brutal, so.
They're tough.
So, um, also, we just wanted to let you know that our other recreation coordinator, Colby Whaler, has now just become a certified personal trainer. has now just become a certified personal trainer. So, we are hopefully going to be utilizing that more in the future. Uh, we just started up some flyers, and we'll hopefully get some information out in the near future about him giving free 30-minute clinics during his, his regular work hours to individuals who are interested and know nothing about things like weight training. So you come in, I don't know, the first thing between a squat and a bench press, and he comes in and he helps you, get you feel comfortable and get you started on a little bit of a workout routine. Another service we want to provide at our recreation center.
Anybody else back there? Okay, Steve, you're on.
All right. We had a conversation at director's meeting last week about maybe having some presentations at the end of the council meeting under reports by officials and staff about some of the projects or things that are going on in the city. And I got picked to be first, so here you are. And it's, it's fitting that it's National Public Works Week this week, and we're, we're recognizing all of our public works officials as they're out in the field. And so we thought we'd talk a little bit about Strickland for Streets, 2019, some of the work that we've finished thus far. You'll see in the presentation also some utility work. And of course, all of those folks are our public works folks. So I'd like to highlight the sign that we have on this slide. You'll see these signs up on the various roads that we're trying to fix this year. Hopefully, you've been seeing those. Completed to date on paving, we've, we finished East Bijou Avenue in the industrial park, Merchi Place down here, south of town, West Sixth Avenue, which was a rather large section from West Street to Ensign, and a small section of Karen from 8th to 9th. Those, of course, all showed up in the program as, as roads that were next on the list. Uh, and we've installed or are working to install waterline in East Sixth Avenue from Sherman to Nancy. Uh, West Railroad, which is the small section of railroad we did not do last year that we'll do this year. And then West Ninth Avenue from Aurora to Lane, where we fixed those waters. We're working on some other waterlines and sewers as we go through the project. Here's a picture of Bijou out in the industrial park. All of these roads really entailed that we would remove all of the asphalt, clear down to the base course, and then we, we brought in some fly ash material and milled that into the existing base. And then, in the industrial part, we put two lifts, four-inch lifts of asphalt down, so it's a total of eight inches asphalt. That road should last, well, well past my career, no doubt, so. Uh, Merchi Place, that's that small section south of town. Again, we removed all the asphalt, put in some fly ash, and two, two-inch lifts of, of asphalt. Sixth Avenue, same thing, all the asphalt's out. We put fly ash in, and then two, two-inch lifts, so total four inches asphalt. And the same with that small section of Karen. These are all done. If you haven't driven them, I, I ask you to go ride them. They're really smooth, if you're a bike rider. Dave, uh, these are great roads, you know, industrial park. It's pretty, pretty smooth, uh, bike riding.
Yep.
Along with that, we also complete curb and gutter and handicap ramp improvements for ADA. And we'll fix damaged curb and gutter sidewalk that, you know, might be in those areas. We did quite a little bit on Merchi Place and along Sixth Avenue, and, and a little bit out in the industrial park. So we try to fix those things as we go as well. All of the money that we have, you know, comes out of Strickland for Streets and the $900,000 that we have. This is the new asphalt zipper. Uh, we've been using that to grind up the waterline trenches. Before the waterline guys come in, uh, the streets crews will go out, and that thing mounts to the front of a loader, and it just grinds up the asphalt all the way down to the base. So then the waterline guys can come in and dig that waterline and fix it. And then we just try to put that base back in place until we can get in and get it paved. Uh, this saved us significant money. We were contracting this work last year, and so we're able to do that in-house. And I, I anticipate we'll pay for that $150,000 machine in five years by doing this work ourselves, so. Yeah, it's pretty cool to watch. If you want to see it, I can let you know the next time it's out. But here's some of the waterline that's, that we were doing down Sixth Avenue. Uh, that road's kind of a mess right now. I really apologize for that and ask for patience. We got a lot of rain and snow, and we're trying to wait for things to get out of here, and then I think the paving crews will be in before long. But, uh, this is, you know, that's that trench. They milled that with the zipper, and then they're fixing the, the pipe underneath, so. Uh, just remember to heat all traffic control signs, and, and we appreciate the patience that we get from our citizens as we go through all these projects. This last slide is pretty fun. Uh, we had some kids at the Lighthouse Christian School drop off at City Hall here a couple of weeks ago, this little note about, "Thank you for the new black road." And, uh, "Here's a recipe you could use for roads in the future." Or, you know, "You must like the color black, because it's really black, and we like that." And so here's a recipe, you know, you take some licorice and some chocolate and molasses and all of these things, and squeeze it all up, and you put that on your road, and then you crumble some Oreo cookies in the middle for the, for the center line, so. And they provided a bar of chocolate as well, so. It's just fun to see the impact that we have on the community, and, and, you know, it's, it's always good when I'm out walking around and looking at projects. If I see families, or I see somebody on the porch, I try to make an effort to go over and just ask them how their day's going, and if they have any questions, and if they want to come out, especially kids, if they want to come out and look at what we're doing and see the equipment. It's just fun to do that, and this is an example of why, why we do that, just so they can understand why we're doing it and appreciate what they're getting at the end of the day. So it was neat to get that signed by all the kids and the teacher and the little chocolate bar, and we gave that to the streets folks. But that's our work this year. Um, we've got a little more to do yet, so again, just some patience as we get through the rest of the project. But it's looking good out there, and we're way ahead of schedule that we were last year. So we're pretty excited about that.
So I noticed we're also making a heck of a lot of progress on the ADA ramps with Strickland for Streets, too. So that's, that's been a big, big help.
Yeah.
Big help.
And there was a lot done, you didn't, um, put it in there, but there was a lot done, too, on those ADA on Main Street.
Yes, that was a separate, you know, it's funny, because that grant was laying on my desk when I started here. Brad had secured a grant from the Federal Highway Administration, and that was a project that we finally got finished this year. Um, and we fixed, I think there's six blocks of ADA ramps on State Highway 52, mostly in part because of CDOT funds. But yeah, that's more of that work, that we're continuing to upgrade those ramps as, as we can, so.
Do you have a, I'm, I'm assuming Sixth and Sherman is obviously still closed because of our funnel snowstorm?
Yeah.
How much of a delay that's going to be is.
We need some dry weather, so that base will dry up a little bit. Right now, I think if you drove across that, it'd be a real problem for you. So it just needs to dry out a little. We're supposed to get some dry weather, you know, starting tomorrow. And I think we, I'm hoping we can have that open on Friday. It may be closed both tomorrow and Thursday, but it's supposed to get back in the 70s on Friday, so that should start to help us. Colorado weather.
Just in time for the holiday.
What's that?
Just in time for the holiday weekend.
Yeah, just in time, oh, yeah. We'll have it open by the holiday weekend.
It should definitely dry out this weekend.
Yes, yeah, for sure. Yeah.
Steve, I don't know if this is part of it, but Kudo's on the airport road, too.
Oh, yes. Yeah, we did do the airport road this year as well. Um, I know it's outside the city, but it's certainly a city asset, and we need to take care of those assets as well. It was pretty well falling apart, and.
It was terrible.
I didn't want to throw a Band-Aid on it, so the right thing to do is just do it right once, so.
And one more question, and I know this is probably not us. I've gotten numerous questions about what's happening on 34 out towards FedEx.
Oh, yep. I can speak to that a little. So the new FedEx facility is, is built and about ready to open, but part of their requirement for CDOT was to install a, an XL D-cell turn lane into that facility. So they actually are moving the highway to the south to accommodate that, rather than build that on the north side. So you're seeing a lot of work happen on the south, and that's because the, that highway, and you won't really see it, but the highway's actually going to shift a little to the south so they can make room for those turn lanes on the north side. And that's what they're doing at the moment, is installing all of the infrastructure, the, the storm drainage trench, and, and then they'll be paving that in as soon as they get good weather, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, good question. Any other questions on the Strickland for Streets for this year?
I love the signs.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I don't know if we, I think we told you this last year. JW's daughter designed that sign, and so it was fun for her to be able to have that. And then we purchased those and tried to get those up on all of our projects now, so. I just want to thank Brent and his guys. They, you know, I'm overrunning those guys with my budget, unfortunately, and, and they're band troopers. I mean, they've been out there, they've been working really long days, trying to stay ahead of us, and they're doing a tremendous amount of work, so I really appreciate all the work that they're doing as well, so.
His departments have the money.
And it's kind of fun when the holes are there, especially on Sixth, because you can walk right up to the edge. I don't know if you're supposed to, but, and you can look down there and.
You can do that, as long as you have somebody with you that, that knows what they're, what they're walking up to. So be careful walking up to any open excavations without a city guard.
Don't call the council member, North Rep's lead.
Yeah, we'll be digging somebody out.
All right, well, thank you all very much.
Thanks, Steve. Any others?
No, I think that's it.
Bids, meetings, and announcements. Is it done?
Uh, the city is accepting sealed bids for the Alco Feeder Electric Distribution Line rebuild project until 3:00 p.m. on May 28th. And we're also accepting sealed proposals for engineering and surveying services for road design for the extension of several roads until 3:00 p.m. on June 6th. May 23rd at 4:00 p.m. is the Museum Heritage Foundation meeting in the museum community room. May 27th, all city offices are closed for Memorial Day. And June 4th at 6:00 p.m. is the next city council regular meeting here at City Hall.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is an executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 24-6-402-4B. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Fort Morgan Police Department Fair Labor Standard Act issue. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mayor, before we go, um, I will be recusing myself from the executive session tonight due to this being directly involving myself, so.
Second. So we have a motion from Lisa Northrup, a second from Clint Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. We will retire to executive session. Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.